We're all here, except for Ricky Harco, and y'all figured it out by now. He had laid it up in Montgomery. He always does his good job. He goes to Montgomery, he's got some good connections down there. So we hope him safe passage. So, anybody that's been here at this time, we're gonna ask for Ben, Serf Prior, and Chris Cockenoggin, just please.
Yes. Poor God, we love you this morning. Poor God, we thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity, Lord, that we have together here. What we ask is your blessings will be bestowed upon each one that's here, not only these men, Lord, that sit before us to discuss the business, Lord, but God, each and every one of us who has a part in the day-to-day operations, Lord, of our county. Lord, we pray always for your leadership and your guidance. And Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that have been shared here. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to live where we live, and, Lord, and to work with the people that we work with, or God, and work for. Lord, just continue to go with us through this meeting, leading guide each and every one of us. Lord, help us always to be mindful of your Spirit. Poor God, we love you again today. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please, Pastor.
I salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first part of the meeting today, I guess we'll place the proof of men. Got any questions on me? Would you like to approve? Would you like to approve? Say it.
Say it.
Thank you. Men are approved, men as they are. All right, on the end, if we got this heard, sitting Dave in mental health.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I know we have a couple of the DeKalb County CED board members to my right and my left back here, Mr. Langley and Ms. McCammy, they're really good supporters of mental health in DeKalb County. The reason I wanted to come and talk to you briefly was to thank you, give you some information, and as well invite you to something that's coming up in DeKalb County. So, if you'll bear with me, I've got a few copies of our last annual report that you can look at later on, with the number of people we serve, all our partners, because you will find a page in here that has all our partners from the hospitals over three counties, the EMA folks from your three counties. Overall, there's a lot more partnerships than that makes sense, because budgets are difficult these days, as you guys know. And we keep growing in DeKalb County. And one of those things that you guys have been very supportive about, Mr. Harco had sent me an email back, and Mr. Kirk had all seen that, what we're looking for, any future building down the road, because that building that we're in was built in the seventies, and we're kinda outgrowing it, and the driveway is starting to deteriorate. So, anything that you've all said you would help, and we appreciate that, we just keep growing and growing. And the partnerships you will see is across DeKalb County, just like the other two counties. And we really, really wanna focus on serving as many people as possible. Some of the numbers you see in here, you'll say, my goodness, over five thousand, according to some of the statistics from the three counties back in our annual report. You'll also see schools. Schools have been a big step up for us. We are working with more schools. You actually have a full staff here in DeKalb County. When I say full, we went from, when I worked here in the eighties, from a couple of staff members and a doctor who visited to a full-time nurse practitioner, telemedicine, so we can connect for services, full-time counsel for children, full-time for substance abuse, which was a big step for us to have in this county, and our adult services. So, things have blossomed, and with that blossom, we're really growing beyond our current structure. So, when you get a chance to look at this, if you have any questions, if you will call on me, ask me, we'll pursue whatever we can. One of our board members, Emily McCammy, had mentioned Tarkog. So, I've reached out to them to see if there's any grant proposals or things that we can use to help DeKalb County as well. So, we're gonna try everything we can to build on what we already have here for DeKalb County, and keep building that. Also, this is recovery month, and you all know where Geraldine is, right? Well, I'm gonna give you some copies, and some of the folks in the audience will have copies of the recovery event that's coming up. It's free. We'd love to have you come on Saturday, on September the twenty-ninth, and join in, and have some food with us, take a walk. It does have some folks that provide substance abuse services in this area, and support your local hospital and your local mental health center. We're really focused on trying to help deal with the drug issues, because it's complicating services for the adults, children, adolescents now, and for the elderly, believe it or not. So, we are willing to focus on recovery regardless. Like I said, we serve children, the whole age span from children to adult and geriatric. So, our role is expanded from what it once was. One of the biggest issues, and sometimes you may hear that, is the lack of hospital beds. And that's a problem, because we went from four state hospitals in the state to one. And sometimes getting those beds to go from local hospitals, inpatient psychiatric local hospitals, to state hospitals, it takes quite some time. So, sometimes that puts a burden on our mental health centers, your counties, your detention centers, your hospitals. So, when you look at these partnerships, you'll see that we're all working together. So, if you have any questions, or there's anything that comes up about mental health services, I hope that you'll call on me, ask questions, ask questions of our board members, because there is a big population to serve. I just saw a survey that was put out on Twitter about mental health services in the state of Alabama. Guess what the number three spot is? Mental health and substance abuse, you must have thought, Mr. Jackson. It is really becoming a real issue, and we're doing everything we can to help, and we really, really appreciate your support. Y'all are really, not only friendly, but you're very supportive, and we appreciate that. So, I'm gonna hand these out to you. And thank you again for the help in trying to look into the future for our building, and for our services. And like I said, any questions at all, please call on me. And I thank you for your time. You've got quite an agenda today, it's a long one.
Wow.
Thank you.
You're always welcome. Miss Harco, we thank you for your passion.
Thank you.
To do your job, and for obviously to the county.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I know mental health is a pretty big monster.
It is.
Among all the counties everywhere. And I thank you for your part.
Yes, sir.
And we'll try to do our part to help with that.
Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Okay, next on the agenda is the Boozer Bridge land agreement. The Boozer Bridge land agreement is an agreement between the county and the city of Ranville. We have agreed in the past to do some work, the backfill and the approach work for the Boozer Bridge. In exchange, the city of Ranville was gonna give us a little parcel, two to three acre property out there, close to Shankly's Body Shop, and it was gonna be a place for a work room to meet out there and venture in. We have a problem with people stealing pumps and batteries, just different things off our trucks. And so, this will give us a fenced-in area that we can have, make a meeting, build a building on it, so they can be in the drive-in and they can do it. So, Charles Dunian, Ben has got some preliminary work on that, I think, and what you got, Charles?
Well, Ben and I met the other evening and spoke about it, but I have spoken twice, three times, with Ms. Nikki Scott, attorney for the city of Ranville. And initially, this started out as a Boozer Bridge project, as I recall, and Shavees Bridge. But then, something fell through regarding the Boozer Bridge, even though they have been awarded funds for it. So, what is gonna happen is the city of Ranville has agreed to transfer to the county two to three acres of land, for the purpose of which Mr. Duen has just announced. But everything looks well to me. They did a suggested contract last year, and I've got to sift through this again to make sure I haven't overlooked anything, but otherwise, I think it's ready for approval. Ben?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree?
Yes, sir, there just needs to be some wording probably changed as far as the funding, the way that it's referenced in the contract. But just as far as the overall, we've agreed in principle to provide that to the city if and when the funding for that project comes around and they get to do it, then we're agreeing to provide that service if and when that happens at some point in the future.
The Boozer Bridge project?
Yes, sir.
And paragraph three on page one, which begins, whereas Ranville has been awarded ATRIP funding, I need to make certain that the city is, that that paragraph is correct in that when our obligation comes up, the county's obligation, that this wording is correct. And I wanna be sure that this funding is in place. But do you know if it is or not, Ben?
To my knowledge, that funding for the ATRIP is not available any longer for that project. The city got X amount of dollars for the two projects, the Shavees Bridge and the Boozer. And with the costs estimated for the Shavees, well, actually, what it led to contract for, the city's portion, they had to use all of their ATRIP funds to cover their portion of the Shavees project. So, to my knowledge, there's no longer ATRIP funds available for the Boozer Bridge project. So, the city's gonna have to come up with some additional separate funding to pay for the Boozer project. And so, we've agreed, we've agreed to do the work on the Boozer project, regardless of the funding that the city gets.
When that, when that project comes up. So, it appears to me as attorney for the county that that funding project, that paragraph is going to have to be revised or taken out.
Yes, sir.
Because those funds are no longer available, as I understand what you're telling me.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Scott and I have agreed, we'll look down later today. But I want to read both, both agreements again, suggested improvements. But that paragraph, in my opinion, does well as legal counsel. It has to.
What was the anticipated cost of the, original anticipated cost of the bridge?
The Boozer?
Boozer Bridge, yeah.
I don't remember.
Must have been fairly significant.
It was, um...
Well, the Shavees Bridge, I mean, higher than the thought it was, and it kinda heated up some money. I think it was about one point.
Yeah, the Shavees left for 1.8 million. And that's an eighty-twenty split. I don't know what their original, how much they got for it originally, but...
So, going forward, our agreement would be to do the work if the Boozer Bridge project was...
Right. Help them when that bridge becomes available, where they can find it and work it. Our agreement is to help them with the approach work.
That's kinda open-ended.
I'll let it stay there until we reach a corrected agreement. And when we're proving something that's not accurate already, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to do that right now.
If I may be excused a few minutes, I don't see anything on the agenda that I need to be in here for. Let me go check on this so that I can tell you. If I cannot reach the attorney for, or Nikki Scott, then we'll have to do this group. But we want to try to get this approved on Monday, as I understand it, is that right?
Well, the city was wanting to go ahead and get this done, if we could work it out today. And what I was hoping for, if we could, I'll agree, but, you know, whatever questions might be, we want those answered.
What about if we go ahead and give it approval, if you wish to do that, subject to this paragraph that the funds are there, the ATRIP funds, because they aren't there, as I understand it?
Yeah.
But what discussion is missing?
Send it in.
If you look at that agreement, the third paragraph down, which refers to the ATRIP funding, as I understand it now, that is not available. And I don't want this to be in here that it is available with knowledge that it possibly is not. And if that's so, then I would want the documents supporting this to establish that in fact the funding is still in place. And based on this truth, or I don't think it is in place, I think it's a hundred percent lie about it. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think my biggest concern is just having an open-ended statement that we will assist on the Boozer project whenever it comes up. Was that, that's really kind of, got to be years down the road, but that's kind of committing us to something that we don't have a projection on cost of. So, should we, is that...
Well, no, you're making, no, that makes plenty of sense. The problem that we have, if we, if you're not in agreement with it, the problem you have is, I don't believe that the deed would be issued by the Ranville for the land that we, that the road department needs for, am I correct, placing the equipment. Is that right?
Exactly.
And...
So, the work has to be done before the land is exchanged, is that right?
No, what I want them to agree is that in exchange for our agreement to do the Boozer Bridge project, subject to this paragraph being approved that they have the funding, as I understand it, the Shavees Bridge costs so much money, it's projected costs so much, that the funding that was gonna be going to the Boozer Bridge is gonna have to go to, basically have to go to Shavees, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So...
Well, even if it's several years before the Boozer Bridge can be funded, it would cost more from the equipment use standpoint for us to do the work. But the value of the land that we're receiving in return for doing that's gonna increase as well. So, it's sort of parity from that standpoint.
And we may want to stipulate that the work that we will do is within, is relative to the scope of the work now. That the scope, the scope will not change to increase our work in the future. That we're agreeing to do this, this work, or the same in the future, and not, the scope won't change to make it a larger project, which I don't think it will, based on the work that's already, the engineering and the design work and everything that's been done. Whenever this project happens, it's going to happen, I believe, just like it's been approved to happen. Of course, it went all the way through the process with the state, and was approved for letting, but then when they ran out of money, then they had to stop. And that's kind of the same thing that we did with our first ATRIP project, which was a bridge culvert, which was the one that went through the Garvey program, made it all the way through and was ready, and then the funding ran out. And so, then when the funding came available, we built it just like we had already approved it previously. So, I don't believe the scope of this project will change in the future. But we may want to stipulate that, that says, you know, we're agreeing to do this scope of work now or in the future, and then it's, you know, it's not going to change.
Please, please send me a note to that effect. And also, since we're discussing this, I have a big concern about our exposure to liability. Ben and I talked about this months ago, and also, Mr. Jackson. And that is that those who will be preparing this, like, based on the county's agreement, they will be insured for negligence and damage that might otherwise fall on the county. And what I would want at that time as county attorney is I want some proof of their insurance coverage. And this man in insurance, wouldn't you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a copy of their insurance coverage, and I'll make that clear, and I'll probably do that by email and copy to all of you. That'll be some days away. But as far as going on with the project, getting the exchange, if we can get rid of this issue here, or it can be clarified to all of our satisfactions, especially mine, then I think we can go ahead and forward with the exchange. As long as that makes sense.
Mr. Jackson, there's an awful lot of unanswered questions at this point, and things that are not clear, as per things in city of Ranville nor DeKalb County. What, I think we'd be doing a grave injustice to county citizens and also to the Ranville if we passed something like this without having all those questions clarified.
What's the...
Does that, I mean, I'm just a little uncomfortable with it.
This being time-sensitive, now, is time-sensitive to Ranville to get this done?
Yeah, yeah, they're just wanting to get it done.
Well, right, but I understand, I'm not against it.
They would turn on the plan at this dispute point.
Are we gonna intervene if they're constantly in the debate?
No.
If we post comments on the vaccine?
No, no, it would be no.
Then I think it should be capable, as you're about to say.
As long as, as long as it's not a law.
No, it won't enter into, I guess, there's just something they were just wanting to kind of get behind.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the board.
Motion to table it.
Second, all in favor, I?
Aye.
I was a favor, you know, likewise. So, we'll table that agreement with the city of Ranville and give opportunity time for everybody to be clarified.
Right, and I think the wording that Ben suggested about the scope of the current project, I think that will satisfy me and in the directions to paragraph three.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank y'all for your supplying wisdom. Thank you. Charles. Okay, next on the agenda will be a protest personnel, Ronnie Alden.
He had a request that, he said, Mrs. Hughes, she's retiring. Actually, at the end, she's gonna be going on leave at some point in time, and he wants to post her position, and so, basically, that's what he's gonna do.
Post the position, correct. All right.
And he'll fill it.
With them?
He told me he would fill it from within, but he wanted to wait until somebody did that, so...
Okay. Y'all heard the recommendation? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Make them open.
Yeah, make them open. You want to make them open?
I'll make them open.
He said, second. Oh, I was there. Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda will be a tax lien sale resolution, if you will.
He's not here, and I don't want to talk about that.
Let's type it out.
Make them open with type of this.
Okay, he's got a second. Everybody, a second, we're doing a second.
So, I got a second.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll table that until Todd Wilson can be here to explain it. Ronnie Alden, if I'm here today, that kind of goes in their field right there. So, we'll let the guy that's got the wisdom on the tax come out and say it. Okay, next on the agenda will be a jail personnel, Mr. Langley.
You want to table yours?
I'd like to get mine took care of, if we could. Good morning, thank you.
Good morning. We do have a couple vacancies we'd like to get filled, a termination, if I may. The termination of corrections officer Jerry Schrader, and we sent over the letter. We'd like to move one of our part-time John Brown to a full-time position to replace Jerry Schrader, and hire Trey McKinnon as a full-time corrections officer to replace Ryan Nolan. That position's been open for a little while, and we'd like to get it filled. And hire Taylor Miller as a part-time corrections officer to replace John Brown, who's moving to full-time. That's all we have this far.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Y'all heard it. Any discussion?
Make them open for approval to suggest a change.
I'm second, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm happy.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you, appreciate you. All right, next on the agenda will be rural public transportation. Ms. McCann.
Can't walk straight this morning.
Looks like you've got a lot going on.
Yeah, we do. Luckily, we've had a lot of people that want to come volunteer their kind to us, to do new projects. I'll go ahead and mention one of them on here. We've got a certified fitness instructor, I believe he's sixty-two years old, retired, and he's gonna start teaching in October, two days a week, and it's going to be functional mobility, basically, really easy, low-impact exercise class. So, we're gonna start there, and he also is excited about doing one-on-one with some people. So, we're gonna see, get started with that, and then see where we'll build from there. We're excited about him now. But on your agenda, the first thing you want me to do is background check contract, correct? In the past, we have not had to do background checks, because we use the Temporary Employment Agency, and they handled it. We're not using that agency anymore, so we need to get background checks done on some of our new employees. And we want to do it with B and B reporting. And I'd like permission to do a contract with them.
Is that, is that who you will go through to do the background check?
Yes, that's the company that's had the best prices and had the scope of what we needed background check for.
And have you gone through the Better Business Bureau to check them out?
I have not, I will do that. But I know that Jackson County's using them, Council on Aging.
I'll speak with your county attorney there regarding that issue. It's not an issue, I'm sorry, but we need to know that.
Yes, okay, so I will check with them. And the next thing on your agenda is travel, is that correct? Okay, we have a few things coming up.
Let me put, in this whole case, that informed motion, the move, we allow them to use B and B reporting subject to suitable recommendation from the Better Business Bureau.
They only heard the first, got second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm happy, thank you, Ms. McCann.
Great job, thank you on that one. All right, and then travel. We're gonna be traveling out of the county for two events coming up. The first one's State Masters Games, and we have two of our participants being inducted into the Masters Games Hall of Fame this year. And most of our participants are from five senior center, and they have hit the ground running with trying to find donations to help pay for their trip down there, and we're gonna be providing transportation. Do you need to know specifically who's going as far as staff? Or you just need, I need to ask for permission for staff to go?
That sounds good enough, the way it's right.
And do you want me to loop in the other transportation? Yes. Okay, the other transportation, y'all may see it in the newspaper soon. Looking at you.
Today.
Today, in the newspaper. The Korean War Ambassador Peace Medal, they're gonna do a ceremony in November. Has anybody heard of those yet? Nope. Basically, what happened is, South Korea, when people visited them after the Korean War, if they had served in the Korean War to help their country, they'd been giving them an Ambassador of Peace Medal. Now, they've reached out, and they're giving the medals here in Alabama. And the deadlines are due to us, or we're accepting applications. We have to have them in by September twenty-seventh, and we're gonna turn them in to the VA, and then we're gonna provide transportation in November to Montgomery to their, to their ceremony. But she's got all the details in the paper today, more than I have with me here. But we're gonna try to transport the ones that need it at no charge to them. So, that was the other transportation.
That sounds great. And maybe we authorize the travel to the State Masters Games in October into Montgomery in November for the DeKalb County Korean Veterans.
Thank you, Chris, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All vote, no? Thank you, Ms. McCann.
Thank you, and I do...
I said you got an update there, if you done.
I do. When do we do the transportation, our closing schedule? Was that supposed to be on this?
The...
Or has it been done?
That was the last one.
Last one, okay, I'll let you in, thank you. All right, the updates. We do have our forty-fifth anniversary coming up for the senior center program. We were one of the, Ranville and Fort Payne's were one of the first senior centers in the state, and we're gonna be celebrating that. You know I need a cheat sheet. I'm ready to, we have three or four events happening in October, new events. So, it's been confusing in my office, but the event's gonna be Friday, October twenty-sixth. We've got a corporate sponsorship by Senior Health Spring. We're gonna do lunch, door prizes, costume contests, music games, and fun. And we usually do something in May, but we're gonna do this to celebrate National Senior Center Month, which is actually in September, and to celebrate our forty-fifth anniversary. So, you guys are all welcome to come. We're gonna be providing transportation for our senior centers to get there, but it's gonna be at the Tom Bevel Center. Another thing we got going on in October is our annual Live Dance Jamboree. This is the main fundraiser we do every year. This is their thirteenth year, and I'm proud to say that I have attended it, all but one of them. They usually do them on a Saturday, but I always was there. And with it, they're gonna do it on a weekday this year, and it's gonna be on a Tuesday, the day before Halloween. And we've got Chick-fil-A is our main sponsor for that, they're gonna pay for our sandwiches. So, the fees we generate, hopefully, it'll go back, all back into the fundraiser pot.
Where did you say the Live Dance Jamboree was gonna be?
It is going to be at Minville Baptist Church Life Center.
Okay. I know before we've had them at the Coliseum Center, and I tell you what, they have a big time.
We do, we do. If there's music playing and they let us dance, we're gonna get that.
And these folks can go all day.
We would, you have to kick us out.
And I know me and Ron has tried that.
And I know you're gonna come try at my place, too.
Well, not very well. I mean, after about one, a dollar song, I mean, my hip hurts, my legs hurt. I don't say I do. And I'll hit on something, but Ranville and Hennecker, I'm at quite a bit, I go in and out. And that is a really big asset for our seniors. They enjoy that, the crowd out there, we got about, started out with two or three, made your music in the corner years ago. And now at Ranville, that's probably twenty, twenty-five folks that are playing their guitars and up and... Ricky Harco still, why, Ranville's up and doing. But they love that. And my mama started out there about, she said she wouldn't, you know, didn't like she fitted into that. And she's got out there now and fell in love with all of the folks. She plays dominoes. And she's been out a while, six, so she started back yesterday, and she won her two or three games, so she's part of it.
We're not ashamed of bragging rights in this kind of place.
But I know, in fact, those folks at Five and Ron and them at Rainville, they love the job and they do a great job. And I know all the rest of them do, too. Thank y'all for working on it.
And I forgot, last time I visited, it was way too long-winded, but this is the short version of the meals program. In the previous year, we served over, for the people that come into the building to eat, we served over three hundred and fourteen clients, twenty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-six meals, and at a value of over eighty-five thousand dollars. For our home-delivered program, we served four hundred and forty-one people for, with sixty-seven thousand six hundred sixty-eight meals for over two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Through the TACO, funding of that.
I doubt that many people in this county realize just how valuable that particular program is to the seniors. It's a, it's a godsend, it really is.
And then our transportation, last year, provided over twenty thousand five hundred trips. So they did that with the senior centers and then people that are not part of the senior centers. But it's a growing program.
Well, we thank you for what you do, and we can all tell there's a little bit of foreign, you get excited about it.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I've said before, the day I finally realized I'm a senior, I might actually use some of your services.
Alright, next on the agenda will be your EMA Director, Anthony Clifton. Come on up, Tom. Yeah, I wanna bring Michael Posey. I think he might be the man of the hour to die.
Yes, sir, it's a few times that I get to come and bring you good news. Didn't wanna say, however, to, to remember that today is nine eleven. And, and, and we should remember those who perished and, and, and changed life as we know it forever. And this is a, you know, take, take a moment to reflect on that if, if you don't mind. But the reason I'm here today is to recognize one of our employees, Mr. Posey, who is Deputy Director. Week before last, returned from EMA, the Emergency Management Institute, the National Training Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, as a graduate of the Emergency Management Professionals Program. And that's what you see on the paper before you. What the EMPP consists of are a series of academies. FEMA's idea, this began in two thousand and eleven, and it was the, the idea that FEMA would put people through an, an academy, much like we do policemen, firemen, paramedics. Emergency management is coming forward as, as a real profession. And so, so FEMA recognized the need for that, and they developed the, the EMPP. Which begins with a, a, it's, it's a month-long course as basic academy. And it, it, it's foundational knowledge. It's the basis. It teaches you the basics. And it's intended for those who have zero to three years' experience in emergency management. And it, and it is foundational. It teaches all of the basics about declarations and public assistance. It teaches about the, the core capabilities that we, we all talk about. Then, and, and these are not necessarily, you don't have to take one to take the other. But the next step is the Advanced Academy. The Advanced Academy talks about issues in emergency management, leadership, critical thinking, complex problem solving. That's another month, and that is a cohort. You have to, you have to take these classes in series. You have to develop it at, at the conclusion of the Advanced Academy. You have to actually turn in a paper, a capstone event, which is published by FEMA. You can look it up in, in the, the library at, at FEMA. And so all of these, these papers are done, much, much like a, a thesis is done. And it, so, so it is a requirement, it's a very complex situation. It teaches primarily management leadership. Those classes are intended for people who, who are more in, in, in the middle of their career. And then finally, the third step is the National Emergency Management Executive Academy. Now, the Executive Academy is, is, it is targeted and, and, and I don't like to read to you, but that's the best way to do it. Executive Academy is designed for emergency management, senior executives, and state, local, tribal, territorial organizations, academic institutions, private sector entities. The ideal candidate will serve on major commissions, task forces, and be responsible for decisions that have significant effect on policy. These, these are, these are classes, the, the, the Executive Academy is intended for those people who are going to lead us into the next generation of emergency management. It will have effect on policy at the national level. They work together as a group, like, like it says, from, from local, state, federal, private. They, they get together and, and it's more or less a think tank. That's another month. That's another four-week series. So all together, you know, we're talking about a, a, a lot of time and a lot of effort to, to do that. And you, and the Executive Academy is only offered once a year. It's a cohort. It means once every three months. It's only offered once a year, and it's only open to a maximum of forty students. Mr. Posey was chosen to be one of those forty students this year, this, this last year. And he graduated in August from his cohort, and I wanted him to talk just a little bit about that. But the other thing is, is that, that while not everybody qualifies for, for these. I applied for the Executive Academy and was turned down. And, and, and that's just, that's, that's the way it goes. They, they didn't, they didn't need me at the time. And instead, they chose the Assistant State Director from Alabama. I applied the next year and, and he was accepted, and, and we are very proud of that. We're very proud of him. But what makes this particularly special is that Mr. Posey is the first person in the state of Alabama to complete all three academies. Alright? He is the second person in all of Region Four, which is FEMA Region Four, which is from Florida to Kentucky and from Mississippi to the Carolinas. There are only two people in all of Region Four who have done it. There are only twelve people in the entire nation who have completed all three academies. And Mr. Posey is one of those people. And, and I felt like that was deserving of some recognition, and I want to, to recognize him and tell him how proud that I am of him. And I want to recognize him with you, and, and when we get done here, I don't wanna delay Martin and him, but after the correction meeting, I would like for y'all to stay and get a, get a picture with, with Mr. Posey, so we can post that on our, on our social media. But with that said, I would like to turn it over to, to Mr. Posey, and he can tell you more about what he has gone through.
Thank you. So, a little humbling, and so, first I'd like to say I appreciate working in DeKalb County, Alabama. You know, it, it's been, it's been an experience, and I wish it only took three months to do. And, and sometimes, but in other times, I'm glad it took, since two thousand and thirteen when I started. These, these, these cohorts that you get to meet are, are, are an experience that I, that I will never be able to, and would have never been able to, to participate in had I, had I not been able to go to these academies. And, and that is due directly to the County Commission, Mr. Clifton, and, and all of my family, who have supported me. You know, DeKalb County now has contacts because of these, these academies. We have contacts as far as Chile, South America, Guam, Hawaii, Alaska, all fifty states in the nation. And I have a contact in all of those states and everywhere else across the world. You know, there, there are things that we, we, we do in emergency management that, that happen. Other places that we can reach out to them, my network that I, that I've created and been able to create because of these academies. I can reach out to them, and they can help us solve problems here in DeKalb County, Alabama. People from Guam, and people from Hawaii, and people from all over the country that, that are emerg, are emergency managers, and they face the same problems that we face here. You know, the, the one grand thing that I have learned from these academies is that DeKalb County, Alabama is a great place. Because you hear, or I hear, the, the problems that other counties and other states and other tribal areas face. And, and they face things not only at a, at a operational level, but also at a, at a political level. And that's one thing that I'm proud to say, that in DeKalb County, we have good political leadership that wants to do the best for our people. And that, this graduation from this program is, is an exempli, is an exemplification of that. Because being able to, to attend these has benefited, bring the information that I was able to glean off of, of, of the other people that were, that were involved in these cohorts and these academies. All of these, all of these expert leaders elsewhere in the, in the country that I have been able to bring back and, 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 and take and help our county fix a problem somewhere. Or, or lead us in, in, help our agency progress into a, into a, a program. Or, and make us a better, better prepared county, a county that, that will truly be more resilient in the future. That, as, as we begin to implement additional plans and, and relationship building with, with our, with our partners here, here in the county. But as I said, this, this would not have been possible without the support, especially of, of the Commission and Mr. Clifton. Mr. Clifton has been inspirational, so has, so has each one of you. I know some of you weren't here through, through all of it, Mr. West, Mr. Westbrook, Mr. Wood. You weren't here in the beginning, but since you've been here, you've supported me as well, and supported us. And I say me, you've supported in emergency management, and that's what it is. It's all a team effort. And that's the biggest thing that I have realized, is that emergency management, the, the downstairs, the Emergency Operations Center, and, and the people who work in emergency management, Mr. Clifton, myself, Mr. Martin, Mr. Reed, and, and each of you are, are integral parts, and, and it's not just there, the entire county. Every person that lives, all seventy-two thousand and some odd folks that live in this county are part of the emergency management program, and they have to be part of it. Otherwise, we're failed. We have to, we have to work together. And that is the biggest thing that has stood out from these academies, is that the importance of, of one, one county, one emergency management system, county-wide, working together to ultimately build and, and make our, our lives and our citizens' lives better. And I, I just wanna thank, you know, I wish Mr. Harper was here, because he's been here with you, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Cockburn, Al. The entire way. And I, I truly appreciate each of you and, and all the support that I've got. During the, during the...
Thank you, Michael. We want you to know how much we appreciate you and your willingness to, to do the things you do, way above what your salary is a week. Anybody be around you a little bit, and you don't have to be around you a long, to know what a good guy you are and what a passion you have for the ELA and for helping Mr. Clifton. You help Owen and Clifton, the good guys, you, you help them look a lot better. You know, you add to one another, and I appreciate y'all doing that. Your whole department, Matt, the, the whole bunch down there. Y'all, y'all care, and y'all try to make sure that DeKalb County is ready for what it is. Because every time you're around y'all, you ask the question, what if, what if this happens, what if that happens? And y'all try to prepare for all that. And we thank you and we congratulate you. And this guy right here, he, he's here in DeKalb County, and we, we are blessed to have this guy. But knowing in my heart that they love the places, that would give him a lot more money, and would love to have him. And we thank you for choosing DeKalb County to have your home. Thank you. We appreciate you. Anybody else anything to say?
I, I would say, Mr. Posey, congratulations. This is a, a great accomplishment. And as, as the witness said, we are proud of you, we're proud to have you in, in the EMA. Proud of the passion you have for your work and for the people of DeKalb County. Because we all understand that what you're, what you do is, is prepared for the worst. And, and, and the accomplishment that, that is, is saving lives and, and it's, it's what that, what that does. And, you know, there's so much that goes on behind the scenes, and I, I had no idea what all went on behind the scenes until I became a Commissioner and started getting updates and kind of following what y'all do. But the people of this county should be very proud that we have people like you that are willing to work so hard for them, and, and Mr. Clifton and, and Mr. Reed, Mr. Martin also. But we are very fortunate, and I would put our ELA up against any ELA in the, in the United States. We absolutely have the best. I appreciate everything you do for us.
Yes, it's a team effort.
Scott, congratulations. I think, I think I can, I can probably share in a little bit of the, the emotion that you have being in a similar line of work to the fire service and the emergency services. And I understand that's a, that's a great accomplishment. And to be in a group that's that small and that, that, that elite, especially here in the state, but when you look at it nationwide, that's, that's a great accomplishment. So congratulations to you on that. And I hope that, you know, it's like, it's like Shane says, kind of a reflection. When people, when people name, myself in, in fire service and yourself in emergency management, you're not having a good day. They don't, they don't call us a lot of times, just say, hey, how y'all doing?
No, no.
Usually when they call, there's something bad happening. And, and I know that you folks are probably watching the news, and, and there's something bad looming in the next couple of days for our East Coast. And, and it's times like those where people like the guys that I work with and people like Mr. Clifton and, and Mr. Posey and, and Mr. Martin will be potentially called to, to assist, and, and this could be, this could be devastating, could be catastrophic. And so, you know, hopefully, hopefully you don't have to use your newfound accomplishments. But the odds are very likely that, that there will be a time and a place in the very near future where, where those will be utilized. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. I, I would say that Mr. Posey was a good hire. When we hired him as assistant, he and my manager took it, it job, picked him out. I can always depend on Michael to, on, on our grants and everything else that we deal with. I can always depend on him to, to get to the, get to the bottom line on it and get, get it done. And, and he, he reacts in a very rational, very stable way. Controls his temperament, you know, things are flying around. He's just as stable as he can be, which is what you want in that situation.
He hadn't seen me without coffee.
But we appreciate you, Michael, very much.
Thank you.
Michael, it's my understanding, from a very reliable source, and you didn't even know I know this, if it's in fact true. And I believe it to be true, and that is that you actually were offered a much higher-paying position in another state. Some two to three years ago, am I correct? And you chose to stay here for less money, but you loved DeKalb County. And we all, and I can speak for many others other than in this room, we appreciate you and you, sir. Thank you both.
Michael, it's been a pleasure to watch your development, to reach some of your potential. You're not through. Being a part of an organization that's allowed you and your other teammates to have the training that's necessary to self-servingly help ourselves, it's been a pleasure to watch you reach this pinnacle. As much as I hate to think it, at some point in the future, your abilities will be needed greater someplace else.
needed greater someplace else. And when that day comes, I encourage you to not do just what your heart says, but what, what you really think you need to do, not just for one county or one state, but for the country. I wish you well.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
First to you.
My pleasure. And with, with that said, uh, I do want to add just a little bit to that. The Executive Academy is not just a FEMA thing. FEMA does not teach the Executive Academy. It's actually taught by the Harvard Business School, uh, in, in conjunction with the Naval Postgraduate College. Uh, we're talking about, this is a very strong program, not, not many people, it's, it truly turns you into an executive. And with that, uh, we nominated, we have nominated Mr. Posey to, uh, be a fellow, a fellowship, uh, with Homeland Security in DC. Uh, and, and we are pending, uh, acceptance to, to that. He had been, been, uh, hopefully, well, he'd been vetted as we speak and so we could actually have Mr. Posey, uh, working inside, uh, the Homeland Security Joint Terrorism Task Force. Uh, and then he will do another year, uh, inside the state with Homeland, uh, at the state level, working with, with counterterrorism. So, so we're very pleased with him. Uh, now with that said, also, uh, like Mr. Westbrook says, I, I need to report to you that most likely one or all or some of us could be, you know, could be deployed to the Carolinas as it stands right now. Last report, uh, that I read this morning, the hurricane has been upgraded to a, to a category four, uh, which means it is bigger than Hugo, it's bigger than Katrina, uh, it's bigger than Ivan, uh, and it means that, that, that some or all of us could be deployed to that, uh, in, in, in the coming days or weeks. So, so, uh, and it could, and this will be one of those like Katrina, that we could be deployed, uh, months after the event, uh, once we get into recovery. So this is gonna, this, this could be the biggest storm we've seen, probably, well, Katrina was the most costly, uh, but, but the, the, really the worst Atlantic hurricane we've seen, it was Andrew. And so we're talking about a hurricane that could do as much damage, uh, as Andrew did. So, so we are prepared. Uh, Scott, we need to, to have a discussion about eighty-nine, uh, at, at some point in time, but I just wanted to report that to you, anecdotally, that, that especially Mr. Posey with his leadership ability, uh, could, could get activated to go help others. Uh, we know we've always done that in the past, uh, and we appreciate your support now, but thank you so much for, for supporting emergency management program and, and like I said, Mr. Posey, uh, has done a fine job and I just wanted to personally congratulate him and tell him how proud I am because again, it's, this has been a five-year effort. Again, we talk about months of, of work or weeks of work. Uh, keep in mind that, that for that, that capstone, uh, event for the Executive Academy, he, he had to do a team, uh, presentation, uh, you know, to policy level people at FEMA and Homeland. And, and so, so we're talking about, I think they're very important and I'm, I'm really proud that he's part of our team, uh, and, and again, I want to thank him and I want to thank you for your support as a commission and allowing us to do what we do because as a team, we, we work better together. And, uh, you know, I personally, you know, Henry Ford, uh, says you don't have to be the smartest guy in the room, you just have to know the smartest guy in the room. And that's what I try to do is to make sure that I surround myself with people who are smarter than me. And, and as you can tell, Mr. Posey is much smarter than me and, and I recognize that and again, that's the reason I want him, uh, you know, to know how much we appreciate him. But thank you, gentlemen, uh, and we will report back to you.
The more y'all there, I think it should be an ideal time for us to do a moment of silence and reflection for all those that still suffer from nine days of, uh, tremendous fate that had on our nation and may remember that always and also for protection of all the votes in our hands. Thank you. Let's have a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next one again, and we've got a little housekeeper, personal housekeeper.
Housekeeper. Uh, we have two positions built housekeepers, one is a Christian, uh, Will Banks and then Alan Hancock, uh, who's, who's been, uh, contracted, recommended and he's also, uh, he's gonna have Deb to be, uh, he's putting her kind of over all the housekeepers and pool housing over here. And so she's, she's gonna be cleaning house.
Cleaning house? I know, I... Okay, gentlemen, I heard a recommendation, what's your suggestion?
Both of you.
Both of you.
Both of you. We've got a second.
Second?
Second, thank you all very much. I'll play for the eye. No, likewise, I may have to take up some of it. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Sharp, going to give us an update on the budget. Mr. Sharp?
All of you should have just a worksheet and budget.
Is that worksheet?
It's just a, it's a simple worksheet here, kind of reading your pleasure. Uh, this is just a proposed budget. It's a draft, uh, as you can see that it's, uh, it's nineteen million, seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars is our budget. It does include, uh, our normal step raises and, and a cost of living adjustment in that. I do have a mark here, the box says, does not include capital. It does include some capital items and we're not including them. In that budget doesn't include like our, our truck budget and, and sheriff's table budget, those things we do out, kind of on the side. But you can see here, the, the budgets over the last several years, uh, from oh eight, you saw, you see where we kind of went down, uh, because of the economy and, and we started up a little bit. We're up a little bit from what we were, um, last year. And so, uh, I think the economy is starting to improve and that's, it's looking very positive, uh, in DeKalb County. Uh, but this first page is just a listing of all the funds that we have, uh, and then the, the next several pages give us some detail. Uh, pages two through five is a breakdown of each fund and what is included, uh, in each fund per department. Uh, flip over to page six. Page six is kind of a three-year, uh, start of three-year history, page six to ten. I want to hit on a couple of these items on page, page six. And about the middle of page, it's got intergovernmental revenues. That third line item down is the simple sellers' use taxes, is the online sales tax we talked about and you can see that the growth we've had in that as far as our budget goes. Uh, that will, we should see continued, a little bit of growth in that and that's, that's a, that's a very positive thing for our, for, uh, for our budget. Uh, but then it's what, there was a talk about positives, I had a talk about the negatives too. If you go down to the TBA, uh, and a little tax monies, uh, that's down and, and, and I may be very optimistic about that number there. Uh, that, that's, that's just revenue that we have traditionally counted on as a growth revenue, but, uh, over the years that is, that's reduced and I think that's going to continue to reduce because of the sell-off of TBA, uh, properties. Uh, I know the Balfont property over in Skoskow has been sold off and, and, uh, I think there's gonna be tax breaks given to them. So Jackson County is gonna be hurt really bad as far as, and easily for, for their property tax revenue and, and their TVA ones. Flip over to the next page and, uh, toward the top, we've got our federal inmate revenues and, uh, one thing else, uh, I want to give a lot of credit to Jonathan and the sheriff's office on our federal inmate revenues. Uh, what we're, our numbers are, are back to where they were, I think, several years ago. It, it's, it's been very helpful to have that fund and those revenues, those federal inmate revenues coming into a point where it's, it's made our total jail budget, uh, able to sustain. During, during the bad economy, uh, you know, revenues were down and expenses were going crazy and, and it was, uh, it was a very difficult time for us. And then, then federal inmate revenue started going down and really hurt us. But, but those are coming back up and so we appreciate the hard work I know that, that he's done on that. In the meantime, if you look under that, the jail operating fund, uh, feeding of inmates and things like that are going down. Uh, you know, some, some of that is, is maybe a little bit of housing, you know, the state of our, of our inmates have gone down just fine and, uh, but, but we are, we're down there, but we're up in the federal inmates, so that's, that's positive. Uh, the next page, on page eight, a couple of items I want to mention to you. Uh, Fund One Sixteen, Captain Prognath Fund and Fund One Twenty, which is our jail court cost fund. Those two funds, uh, fund our debt service. One is our, our jail, our jail debt, which we'll talk about, uh, which pays out and I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit, and, and the ATRIT fund. So court costs, uh, the jail court cost can, have continued to go down although you see a, you see a budget of three twenty-five there, uh, that may be optimistic there. Uh, we were getting at one time over half a million dollars in the jail court cost fund to, to help pay for a debt and that gets sink down below three hundred. Uh, so, uh, that, that, that's a, that hurts us so we're having to take a little more out of our capital improvement fund, uh, to put toward our jail court cost, uh, toward, toward our jail debt.
What's the cost of that, Chris?
Uh, just a, I really...
People can't pay the fees, that's the bottom line. I mean, it's, they just can't pay it. The fees have been jacked up, jacked up, jacked up, try to pay the court costs and harder to get, less difficult to pay.
And I think that's basically...
Instead of getting a little bit, they've been...
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Yeah, and our, our court costs went on in two thousand and one or something like that and, and, and I think there has been additional court costs going on after that and that could be part of the, part of the problem. But it is a, it, that, that is a concern, uh, long-term and we'll talk about that in a second. Uh, flip over to page eleven, eleven through thirteen is, uh, is, uh, is another, it's just another breakdown that gives you a three-year, uh, look at the budget, expense side. Uh, page fourteen, uh, goes a little further, it breaks down each department on a line item basis. Uh, that goes from page fourteen through twenty-four. And then I wanted to talk about page twenty-four, uh, that's our debt service. As you can see, I put in some extra little boxes and some little information that maybe I hadn't put in before, but our, uh, our two thousand and eleven jail refunding, those were originally funded two thousand and two. Uh, the two thousand and twelve was funded originally in oh five and of course the ATRIT funds, uh, they pay out between November of twenty twenty-seven and November of twenty thirty-one. Uh, so we'll be out of debt in a few years. So, uh, I, I thought that I'd be retired before, uh, we, uh, ran out of debt, but I'll probably still be here. But, but you can see our original debt, if, if I, if I can, but, uh, you see our original debt and what we paid and then the amount we continued up. So, so this year we have six hundred and ninety-two thousand that we're paying for jail debt each year. Uh, and like I said, that court cost is only three hundred, so, so we're having to get that other one, three hundred and ninety-two thousand somewhere else. Uh, and then you see the ATRIT is two fifty-one. Uh, then have a couple of other pages, transfers and budget that's funded out. So I have a couple, have some flow charts or some, some pie charts, I like those and you can just kind of look at that in your pleasure. It just kind of shows you percentages of how, you know, we got it broken down, but we know that. First one is revenues and it splits it out there, tells you kind of where the money's coming from. Uh, the second one, uh, breaks it down by kind of line item. You know, you can see employee salaries and wages are, you know, forty, forty, forty-one percent. Employees' benefits are fifteen point eight six percent. So, so that's a little, I mean, it's over fifty-five, fifty-six percent of the budget is personally related. Then the next one gives you kind of a category. We have, uh, general government, public safety, highways and roads, public welfare, public health, it gives you those percentages and you can see how much is in interior. Uh, the next one is, uh, kind of by category again, it breaks, it just breaks that down just a little further, tells you how much is in jail, how much is sheriff, how much is road department, uh, our upgrades, that kind of thing. And the last two, I've taken road department, sheriff and, and kind of broken that down and you kind of see how much of the total budget goes for, for each item and, uh, and like I said, road department and sheriff and you can see, see what percentages we lose a little bit. So, like I said, it's, it is a, uh, because your budget is kind of a boot of target, sometimes you have, you have various things that you want to put in and that's just a, that's just a summary of what the budget is. We, uh, we, generally what we do is we'll, we'll, we'll either meet, have a work session or sometime, sometime between now and, we have, the budget hasn't been passed by September thirtieth, so, uh, we can, uh, we can meet if the commission's pleased or if we want to, look through, look through the budget. If there's items that, uh, we have not included or items you have questions about, we can talk about things to go forward.
When we come in?
Yes, sir.
How many of you like the roads and bridges you're driving on, they're smooth, safe, no potholes? How many of you really believe that pickup trucks and private passenger vehicles damage the roads? There's trucks, huh? You see them every day, all of them every day. Out of them in the budget, say the fish next year we're projecting from the state of Alabama, DeKalb County received a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in diesel fuel tax. That's obscene. There's no way in the world. We're gonna get approximately one point one million dollars total, gas tax and diesel fuel tax for us to try to pay the roads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Can't be done. This has to change. It's in that way in every county in this state. Don't ever forget to tell your legislators that they have to do something to increase this tax or you're gonna, we're gonna be the same conundrum over and over and over again. I've been on this soapbox for nine years, I'm not gonna stop till you throw me out.
Scott, y'all heard from Chris Cockburn. Matt Sharp, thank you so much for making, uh, working on this budget. I know y'all work tirelessly, hours and y'all in here all time, all times of the day and, uh, thank y'all too for what y'all do and, uh, y'all's willingness to work with, with old Bud here and Matt Sharp and y'all do a great job and we appreciate your work and, uh, we always, uh, y'all always able to just get at this budget and, uh, of all these years, it's always worked out good for you. Just thank you for your hard work, thank you very much.
Let me add one thing to what, what, what Chris said. Uh, I would, I would want to let everybody know that, uh, Mr. Lattner and Mr. Livingston is in support of increasing that these, uh, funding for, for these roads, but, uh, we need the citizens of this county to talk to their relatives and their friends who live in other areas that have other representatives that might not be in support of it. We appreciate Mr. Livingston and Mr. Matt Lattner.
I appreciate the clarification. I, I neglected to mention that there's no two stronger supporters for that than they are, but the problem does not reside here, is in, in other counties, especially in other wild county where you don't have the support down there in other areas and, and it, it doesn't make any sense and they can't do it by themselves. So everybody, like I said, talk to your family, friends, wherever you have, tell them that that's always gonna be your thought.
Thank you, sir. Anybody, everybody got that, everything on your heart?
Who was your...
Okay, you got it. Our next meeting, we set term twenty-three, sit down and make things, thank y'all all for coming and, uh, for Mr. Dern.
You got it.
You don't think I did it? Motion approved. Thank y'all.